Planning board for the city of Guynor, March eleventh, twenty twenty five, announcement to open a meeting recording. Any person make a may make a video or an audio recording of an open session of a meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number of placement and operation of equipment used so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recording shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents referenced and used during the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the director of the community planning and the community development and planning person to the open meeting law and public records law. All documents shall become part of the official record of the meeting. Is there anyone here recording audio over here? No, I guess not, so, okay. Can I have a motion to approve the February eleventh meeting minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as forwarded to us for the February eleventh meeting.
I second.
Second. Any just further discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose? No opposition? Then it's approved.
We can move on to potentially the old business first.
Okay.
And then move on to the new.
Sure.
I think a lot of the people in here.
Okay. Christine, cover the the old business on.
So Christine isn't here, but we're just gonna have the technical amendment for what I put forward and worked along with Christine for the restrictive covenant and consultation provision.
Alright.
So, this is just having to do with the kind of guidelines. There's two copies that I've kind of distributed amongst everyone if there's anyone else that's interested in looking along with us. I have extra copies over here. One of them showcases the actual changes from the boilerplate restrictive covenant. And one of them just is, you can see the changes highlighted, or slightly grayer color. Apologies, not in full color here and underlined. So, this was the the covenant put forward for the subdivision covering the creation of the, you know, the roadway, the meaning of any final elements, as well as a consultation provision. So, the board having the ability to recommend a engineering firm to go in and actually inspect the construction periodically, as well as the the owner having the ability to amend that and go to the mayor if there is a alternative option that they would like to move forward with as an alternative engineering firm has that. So, this is, for the most part, pretty boilerplate and then has a few waivers included. That's included further down. So, one of them, section A, having to do with section seven point three point two, has to do with the use of HDPE pipe rather than reinforced concrete, which we've already addressed.
Yep.
B has to do with the three inch or three foot sumps, also addressed at the previous meeting and approved. C, section eight point one, has to do with the appeal for the applicants regarding the board's choice of inspection consultant. I just covered that as well. And D, section six point six point A, is waived in part so the applicant may build upon lots and phases that are reasonable to ensure adequate resources available to the applicant to reach final completion of the subdivision. Applicant may obtain any necessary permits for site work on the lots, excluding a permit to erect a building at any time. The board shall release its restrictive covenant barring issuance of a building permit as as to any individual lots. When the work on the ground necessary to service said lots is substantially completed, final elements, just sidewalks, asphalt paving of the way and landscaping, shall not be considered work on the ground necessary to serve a lot for the purpose of releasing the restrictive covenant for said lot. The board may request that a certificate of completion and certificate of occupancy for no more than one lot may be withheld until the applicant has completed all described work by the definitive plan, certificate of approval. These conditions and other decision documents. The board shall also issue a full and complete release of the restrictive covenant upon completion of all work or otherwise under the terms of the restrictive covenant. I'm pretty happy with the work that Christine has has done with putting forward this and I think everyone here, there are a lot of butters, I think, that that have, you know, have set their mind in relation to the last meeting. And this really is, I've even spoken to some of them, this really is insurance that we're doing our due process and due diligence to make sure that this construction is done in a way that is both safe and, you know, really is insurance for ourself as the city that that proper, you know, milestones are met before, you know, the full construction of all the building lots. Say, for example, that, you know, main throughways such as the road and lighting and stormwater and and all those things are all completed, you know, as per needed. So, I'm I'm quite satisfied with, like I said, satisfied with the work work done here. So, I don't know if anyone else had any any comments related to the restrictive covenant?
The only question I have, on a restrictive covenant separate, as far as permitting from the state, as far as access coming off the highway and so forth, is that separate to the covenant?
Mm-hmm.
That would be an attachment to it.
Yep.
Am I correct?
Yes.
Also, when we were to go into this, would we have to vote separately as far as hiring an engineering firm to represent the city, if you would, doing this?
Yeah, so we we would also make a motion to then recommend a engineering firm. We would, I'd present probably a few options for us. There's a couple of engineering firms that the city keeps on contract, so I'd probably reach out to them and and.
Ty and Bond or?
Ty and Bond, Foson O'Neil is is a couple of examples and present those as potential options for the board to make a motion of which ones they would like to move forward with. And then in so case, as I said, in section C, the applicant is allowed to then appeal that decision if if they so choose, if they have an alternative inspection consultant that they they'd like to move forward with.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, tonight, we would just proceed to say yes, go ahead and get an engineer at this point and proceed to the next step, or are we voting on?
So, it would just it would just be to make this amendment to the existing contract?
Gotcha.
Yeah, so the approval that we already made last week, this is just a technical amendment to it.
Make a motion to the amendment.
You have any questions here?
No questions.
I'll make a motion to the amendment from last week to attach the new covenant as presented tonight.
I second.
As well as the waivers.
Yeah, as well as the waivers. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? The ayes have it. The ayes have it, so approved.
It's all approved. Right. Again, if anyone would like a copy of the, this is gonna go in public records. I know a lot of people were here for this, but if anyone wants a copy of the restrictive covenant now that it's been approved, I have a couple of copies right here. Again, there's the first, which is the actual change from the boilerplate restrictive covenant to the amendments made by the attorney. And then they have the actual waiver right here, so.
So, you just voted on something that you guys approved last week?
It was a technical amendment to it, yes.
So, you had a meeting last week about?
Last month, it was last month.
You said week, so.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
You all said last week, so.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Thank you for coming down.
No, fine, I will.
Okay.
Body odor or something, everybody, please?
That's why I wanted to get the old business out first. I knew most of the people here from ones that.
Very good.
Yeah.
So, that's done.
And for this, we have, let's see, at the bottom is the zoning amendment, we'll get to that, sorry, in the packets, we have the.
Yeah, control.
Yeah. I've included both Rob's review, the original application. We only do have one copy of the drainage report, but then there are a couple of spread site plans for us to to reference, three copies of the small and then one copy of the large, so. Apolog- and then, I think, Rob, you you also have a copy?
I've got my copy.
Okay, perfect. I was worried, I was like, we have one, one, not enough, and I don't want people sharing.
Please state your name and who you represent.
So, for the record, Justin Leclerc, McCarty Engineering. Just wanna make sure, new public hearing, do you have to open it technically, or is it already open?
No, this is a public hearing, no.
No.
No?
No, this is just an initial review and then we'll we'll schedule the public hearing.
Nope, I just wanted to make sure.
No, thank you, yeah.
So, as I stated, Justin Leclerc, McCarty Engineering, here tonight on behalf of the applicant, West May Storage for the proposed self-storage facility on Manka Drive. So, I think most of you are familiar with the site. I know you're new, so I'll give you a little.
You were up there.
You did? Perfect, so. And the Manka Drive is here. When you're looking at the end, it's off to the right. The parcel is approximately nine point seven acres, zoned industrial two, is currently undeveloped. So, we're looking to propose seven self-storage buildings totaling one hundred and sixty-nine units, shown here in brown. The gray is the proposed entrance, so we have two. We have one here located a little bit further down. Right down over here is the DPW's pump station, right, Rob? On the right-hand side?
It's the vill- it's.
It's the village, yeah.
It's privately owned, yeah.
Okay. Second entrance is located here at the end of Manka Drive. So, we are proposing security fencing around the perimeter of the property. It's a little bit faint to see here, but it runs just along the edge of the pavement all the way around the back, ties into the building. Maintenance access gate here for this proposed storm art management area, and then the fence wraps around, and then we have gates proposed at the entrances. These aren't electric gates, they're manual, so they'll be locked at the end of business day and opened up at the beginning of business day. Each unit, each building's gonna have solar-mounted lighting. This is very similar to what the applicant has done at his other facilities, so it's just to provide lighting around the buildings. Typical hours, I believe he's eight to eight, I think, so these would be closed at nighttime and they would be secure, so we don't need security lighting in that sense. Just to flip this over so you guys can see. I know it's very busy log grading, so everything is designed to sheet flow to proposed catch basins and drain manholes, and this is all being conveyed to three storm art basins. The first one is here that you saw on the air sheet. The second one is a larger one located here off to the right of the site. And then the third one is located at the bottom of the proposed development, and this is an underground storm art feature, it's concrete chambers that will.
Sorry.
Oh, good. That will take the storm water and treat it, discharge it appropriately. We are proposing landscaping along Manka Drive, so in addition to the security fence that's gonna surround the perimeter of the property. Let's see here. We did provide a detailed sheet that showed some landscaping here, so you can see the fence runs along just a foot inside the property line. And then we have a mix of trees and shrubs that are native species that'll provide additional screening from Manka Drive. Just to put this in perspective, the site is gonna sit lower than Manka Drive, so that's why we're proposing the trees, just that way you drive in there, you don't just see buildings. The, this was submitted to conservation commission. We did receive our order conditions, December ninth, I believe, was the date, so CONCON has seen this, they've approved it. This has been an ongoing project. At the time, the former director had recommended that we go in front of the commission because we had a lot, we had some riverfronts, some buffer zone to deal with. They wanted us to get the, their blessing before we came in front of you guys.
Excellent.
So, I did receive a comment letter from Rob this afternoon. I haven't had time to provide formal responses or make any changes to plans, but I would just like to take some time, run through or just have some talking points to it.
Okay.
So, the first one is the proposed wall on Manka Drive may require burial on the top of wall, given the height of the wall. Just Rob, question for you, when you say buried, do you mean fall protection? Okay, easy enough, we can provide some sort of, we, so it is fenced on the property line. Yeah, so, this is Al Belanger, owner of West May Storage. So, we do have security fence and proposed along the property line, and we do have landscaping, so ideally shouldn't be any issue there, but we need to add a little guardrail or something like that, we can.
Yeah, you typically have to deal with the building commissioner on that.
Yeah, and if he wants it, easy enough. The second comments pertain to the solar-mounted lighting. As I said, these will be on the buildings, they'll active, they'll be motion censored, so they'll activate when someone does come up to the unit. Again, this isn't a twenty-four hour service, so at night it will be locked away, so the security line isn't a major feature for this. Where's the control plan? We can provide easily as part of the city's storm art ordinance. We can look at moving the drain manholes just further away. What Rob is talking about in his comment is that the drain manholes here and here located against the building are tight, so it could cause potential issues with the constructability of it. These are slab on grade with a little foundation, so it's not a full foundation wall, but it's easy enough that we can shift the drain manholes away. Five is pertaining to electrical services. State, there's no electrical service, solar-mounted lighting. Six is sprinkler service, so these are cold storage units, so there's no utilities that services, and the largest unit is six thousand square feet, which is under seventy-five hundred required for sprinklers, hence why we're not proposing any. In addition, there are two hydrants located in Manka Drive, one here right at the start of the cul-de-sac, and then a second one that is closer down by the sewer station. So, there is water on site in the event that something happens, but we haven't received any additional comments from fire department. If they come back with any, we'll respond accordingly. Number seven is regarding depth of the pipe. Right now, we do have a pipe coverage of two and a half feet from grade to the top of the pipe. Typically, the way that we do it is three and a half feet from the rim to the invert of your catch basin, and then you run your pipe slope from there. So, Mr. Al, was that Ron in his comment, the two, one comment and one question I have is, this is a private site, so it wouldn't be managed by the city, and I don't know, I didn't see anything in site plan rights that stated we had to cover, but I believe your subdivision rights require it, so I think that's something we can.
Yeah, no.
We can, we can either change or come to an agreement, that's not a big concern.
Okay.
I just wanted to make make mention of that. Eight is regarding the two-to-one slope, obviously to reduce our impact into the buffer zones, make sure that we're not entering the thirty-foot alteration that the conservation commission requires. We did allow two-to-one grading. We do have an in-house landscape architect that has a typical hydroseed mix for this type of application. We can add that note to the plan that just says it's to be sprayed in multiple directions, and there's a certain loading rate that that seed would be sprayed on. Nine, we're not requiring any dumpsters for this. The way that the owner operates these sites is, it's just for storage, so any trash is required to be taken out by the owner of the storage. So, they come in, if they have boxes or anything, they store it, put whatever they have in there, and they take their trash with them.
So, what you're saying is the renter brings trash in, you gotta bring it out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Snow storage, we can show on the plan, there are areas for snow storage, and Al, would you private contract this if needed, if you had to remove excess snow?
I have all my own equipment.
Yep.
Yeah, if we need to take snow off, we take snow off.
Yep.
Do you mind mentioning your name?
Alan Belanger.
Sorry. Yeah, Al Belanger, owner of West May Storage. The last few comments are pertaining to the storm art drainage that was provided. The first one is estimated high groundwater was not provided in the soil testing. I did speak to Mr. Marchetti, he's the one that did the testing. I did not do it. He forgot to write it down, but he, there was no modeling when it's on site, so we can update the soil logs accordingly. And to comment number twelve, we can show where the soil testing occurred. So, originally, we were trying to not do real structures, so we had tested all the way down the hill where the buildings are shown, as well as in the proposed two at Great Basins. After conversations with CONCON, ZVA, we had to come back with real structures, so we still have testing here, here, and here as well. The comment thirteens regarding freeboard from the top of basin, from the hundred-year elevation of storm art to the top of basin, I can provide that. We can provide detail for the underground chamber system, and then regarding the underground chamber system, we can add a note that states, since this is in fill, we can show that the material underneath the basin would be equal to the parent material for the infiltration rate or not contain any debris hazardous materials since of that. In regard to the breakout, we can show a impermeable barrier along the edge of the system, that way we prevent any potential breakout out of the side of the system. So, that was it from the city engineer. If the board has any questions, happy answer.
Yeah, Jim?
Yes, please.
Uh, there's no office on site?
No.
So, if I were to go down and try to rent a unit, I'd probably have to catch somebody there, am I correct, during the day to rent something?
No, you'd have to reach out to the main office and their number and they would be.
My office is on Chelsea Street, one sixty-one Chelsea.
Okay.
We have another facility there, that's where my office is.
There is one there, yeah.
Or they can fill out an application online.
Okay.
They can go to my website and get all their information they need.
Okay.
And Mr. Belanger, just to extend on that, he, between himself and our people that work for him, go around and check in on the facilities, so they're not left their own devices, so there would be someone that would periodically come in and check, make sure everything's up, kept, and going fine.
So, this would be Mr. Belanger, I guess the the time, it was set eight to eight, it just automatically locks after eight o'clock, so nobody can get in with a key?
Well, that's what we had set up before on the other one. I was, I'm thinking that we probably need to open up a little earlier in the morning and probably stay open till eight or nine at night. And yes, everything's key-coded with the gate, and when it's locked, it's locked, that's it. Their key code starts at a certain time, we can program this.
So, you have to program a timer?
Just like my building on Chelsea Street. You go in, you key, if you're in this section, you get a number for that section, and when it's closed, your key code don't work. They don't like it, but it's the way it is.
Now, in Chelsea Street, you don't have no dumpster there either?
No. Okay.
I have my own dumpsters, I keep them in my, in my yard in Westminster, but no, they're not allowed. People take your trash with you, it's real simple.
But as you as manager, if there is.
When I need a dumpster, I back one up, I open the door and I fill it and I take it away.
But if you go there during the day and you see trash around, you'd be picking it up?
I have guys that go around and do that, like I just sent them to Pittsburgh today because I saw a little bit of trash, we got kind of a fenced-in landscape, and when the wind blows, it all ends up up against the fence.
That's correct, that's what I'm, I'm kinda mentioning there.
Sent them over there this morning, there was enough snow gone, I says, bring the leaf blower, blow the whole park and lock, pick up all the paper.
Yeah.
And, no, we do it, I like a clean site.
Yeah, because we don't always stop blowing on Manka Drive and the playgrounds and the kids and everything else, so obviously.
It's gonna be another whole story.
Right?
We got it.
Good.
Are you going to have any outside parking or storage outside of the bins?
No.
No.
So, everything of the storage is gonna be within inside the bins itself?
Yes, so.
Yeah, I don't do any outside storage, nothing on the roof, nothing outside, no cars parked, you pull in, you do your business and you leave. Reinforce it, and we have tow trucks, just come and get the stuff, get it out of here. It's just, we don't do it. You can get out of here in real fast.
Yes.
We've been there, we've done that.
I read it once, but how many units again, you said?
Hundred and sixty-nine total.
Hundred and sixty-nine.
Between, between seven buildings.
Now, these buildings, we buy, we, they get designed by Betco. This is our rendering of it, and depending on the market, they may say, hey, we need some five-by-fives, some five-by-tens. Everything here is ten-by-twenty's, we may split a few up for smaller units or even a little bigger unit, but it's the same square.
But it don't change.
Yeah, yeah, so the size of the, the overall size of the building won't change.
That's fine.
Yep.
And it's my, my, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jason.
I wasn't sure, do I have to wait for?
No.
I'll just go. Um, I'm just curious, because I know on the other side of Manka Drive is the Old English Village. Have they been kind of consulted about this potential kind of improvement for for the other side of Manka Drive? Just because of, I I believe they have, but.
They were across the street.
They're directly across the street.
Is there any need to?
We've talked to the maintenance manager, we've talked to the office manager.
Okay.
And they know exactly what's going on, and they thought there was gonna be all wide open and a free-for-all, and I says, no, it don't work that way. This is what it's gonna be, and she said, oh, okay, and.
Okay. Um, the other question I had was, between this and the other facilities, are there any restrictions on the type of materials that people are allowed to store there?
My insurance takes care of that.
Okay.
They do their inspections, and yes, you're right, you've gotta be careful, no, no flammable stuff.
Yeah.
No propane tanks.
I know it's a concrete slab, but just in case of any materials being stored on site that, you know, just because of the closeness to the the wetlands. I'm looking out for conservation commission, too, I doubt.
No, they had that say, I believe.
The same question?
It's been a little bit, but I believe they had the same comment, and like Mr. Belanger said.
The catch basins typically have gas traps in them.
Gotcha.
Which isolates it from going out, which is a good thing.
Good, yep.
And it will all be monitored with that, that's, that's. And it will all be monitored with that. That's, that's part of what we're supposed to do.
Okay.
But that's all code.
Yep, and based on Mr. Albers, I don't know how deep you got into it before you started this afternoon. But the stormwater system was designed to be in compliance with the city's stormwater rights and ordinance. Which actually exceeds the state's requirements. So a lot of the municipalities are being told to beef up there or implement stormwater ordinances. So we did that and it's really, um, treatment and so TSS treatment, which is your suspended solids in the water and phosphorus. So you're required to meet ninety percent and sixty percent. We do meet that here based on our design.
So, may I, is there gonna, any outside lights at all during the evening? It's gonna be total dark.
No. My, what I have in other facilities are solar lights. And what happens, they stay on at thirty percent constantly.
Oh, they do?
Yeah, and then when you drive up, they all, they all light up. You drive up, you drive through here and they're all gonna go off. So people around them, the lights go off and the gates are locked, there's a problem.
So this thirty percent light will give the units of the area some type of light?
There's enough to walk around. But to say that you can go in and start doing stuff, I don't put lights inside because I, I try to discourage people from being there at night.
They may want to take residence.
Yeah, that's against the law. Can't do that. Camp that over there is on, and I have to watch that if that happens.
It's happened in this area.
Oh, yeah?
Yes.
Or you let someone park a camper on site, next thing you know, you gotta fire it, go on a fire pit and having themselves a good whole time.
I have a question, uh, on the entrance.
Yep.
To the facility. Um, it's gonna be a full gate or just like a rod, a bar going across, that's all?
Full gate.
It's gonna be a full gate on rollers and it rolls across. And when you go in, you're gonna have to go in through a keypad and then on the way out is a magnetic we put on the ground. When the automobile pulls up on it, the gate opens up, you go out. And it takes so much time, it closes.
Okay.
So you don't have to hit the keypad on the way out, just on the way in.
So then before eight o'clock and after eight o'clock, those gates are gonna be definitely locked?
They're closed, yep. They can't get in. You can punch all the keys you want.
Okay.
Is the keypad, uh, apparently it's manually, it's, how, how does it operate? Is it battery operated? Is it?
No, it's electric.
It is electric, so you're gonna have to run power to the gates?
Low voltage, yep.
Low voltage?
Yep. Slow voltage and you go in, you're punching your fork, code, and then you get pounded and it, it just, it, the gate goes. And it's all tied into my computer over on Chelsea Street. So I know who's going in, who's going out.
Oh.
Kind of a neat setup the way they have it these days. Things have come a long way.
Sure has.
And the cameras, we're gonna do the same thing.
I was gonna say, the cameras are the same.
We're gonna put cameras, solar cameras. Again, things have come a long way. You put them up and you can broadcast your signal for wifi. We're gonna do it up on the hill or by, um, Red Wolf Lodge. Been industrial park up there, I got all my containers up there. And that's what we've got going on and it works. That's been open for years, never had a problem. But it's always one time, you know?
I can't think of a.
I've got a question about erosion and sedimentation control during construction. I said, I know you said you're gonna provide a erosion control plan sheet, but just going back to the two-to-one slopes.
Yep.
Um, in addition to hydroseeding, would you be amenable to throwing down erosion control blankets on that? Just given the steepness of the slope and how close it is to the wetland there?
So we, I don't wanna say no, not, not that we just don't wanna do it. We've tried to go, stay away from those. We just, it's not our preference. I don't know if you would be amenable to erosion control blankets, if, if need be. I know you, you're pregnant, end up doing the work.
Again, it's, it's just something else that's hanging around there that's gonna get tangled up and it's, it's.
Yeah.
I, I would rather see them come in and put tap the fire and the hydroseed and that keeps it intact. It almost creates kind of a coating on the ground. And we found that works out really good, especially on bad spots. And you know there are some places that's bad spots. So you control the water on the top, you don't have a big problem on the slope.
Yeah, and that's, the note that we have, like I said, our landscape architect has worked with other companies that deal with different types of erosion. And erosion control, things like that. And they've recommended to go away from the physical matting and blankets like that. And actually do the heavy-duty hydroseed a, as you're maintaining your work. Obviously, based on size of disturbance, um, erosion control measures, temporary sedimentation basin, stormwater fence, all that. I believe gardeners, stormwater requirements requires inspections to be done on top of it. So I know with the, the rain, the snow melt, everything in the past couple of weeks, we've dealt with it too. That there's been a lot of erosion that as much as you can prepare and have everything set up, knowing it's coming. You still can't maintain it all. So as I told the Conservation Commission last night, there are devices in place that mitigate any potential blowouts.
I, I think this site needs a little common sense as well when you start talking about that, because that's a headache for everybody, not just you folks and the conservation. For me, because if we, you don't go in there in a heavy rain season and start this thing. You know, you just, you pick your time, you pick your battles and you go in and you get your rough grading in and you build your slopes and you hydroseed them right then and there. You don't wait till the end, you just get it done. And you can avoid a lot of stuff if you just play your cards right. You've been at this too long to know to get yourself in trouble.
Go over the, uh, that long gray entranceway again.
Yep.
Where is that, the beginning located?
So right here. So this is the beginning, so there'll be a gate here. And this is just so you can come in, access the units here that run parallel at Manka. And then we tie it into the rest of the site and you have a secondary entrance exit off the cul-de-sac.
So your third entrance is not in the parking lot of that last house on English Village?
That's just a cul-de-sac.
No, this one here.
Yeah, oh, that's that one there.
So the Engle, English Village is down here opposite of the cul-de-sac.
I just wanna make sure. I understand, because I was down there tonight, that's why I was late.
I know.
Okay, I get it now. Any other questions, anybody?
I think, I think it's just, uh, items in, in Rob's report, three.
Yep.
Eleven, twelve, and fourteen, I believe were the only ones.
Yeah.
So I think if we just continue with this on the agenda, those addressed, I think that'd be fine.
Yeah, and with that, I'll provide a revised set of plans. I'll provide our typical response to comment letter, submit that and go from there. Obviously, if, I know Fire didn't respond, I don't think police has looked at it. I don't expect them to have major comments, but obviously if any of the other departments respond.
Yep.
I'll respond back accordingly.
They've been provided a set of plans already? Police?
I believe so.
They've said, um, I can double-check with police and fire.
Yeah.
And I, I can also, because I sent you a PDF as well.
Yeah, you did.
Happy, happy first day, here's a.
It was, it was, it was my first day.
So if I need to resend it, I, I will, but, um, we can follow up with them and make sure that they don't have anything.
Do you know, you know how long this project's gonna take from start to finish? I mean, depending on the weather, obviously.
Yeah, I think, well, we, we've been talking about it and we're thinking like we're gonna start with one phase, button it right up. I don't wanna open up the whole site. Start the first section on the wall, right here, yeah.
Yep.
We're gonna go in, we're gonna do a section and wrap it up, be done with it. We want to win that another section. Again, depends on how the rental, the rentals will go.
Sure.
If they're renting fast, we'll go a little faster, but I really think this size project, we need to just focus on the small section. We don't need to disturb everything right up front, you know? Even if it takes a little longer doing it that way, I think it's gonna be safer.
So the paving itself, it's paved by, that's what you're right?
It is.
Yeah.
So you're gonna, you're gonna pave per section?
I'm gonna base coat it.
Base coat it, the whole thing, or just?
Nope, we'll base coat the sections and then when it comes time, we're gonna top coat the whole thing.
Yeah, so I.
We'll have a nice, nice cover.
Yeah, so I'll kind of, when I'm seeing for phases, tell me if you wanna change it. But this is probably your first phase, the stuff are unparalleled at Manka.
Yeah.
Build it, put the binder down, get it stabilized. As you said, depending on how the market's going, probably move. This might be a little bit more challenging, but you might do the whole thing, you might do half of it, but.
Well, I'm probably gonna do the next two buildings.
The next two and then probably the last three.
Yeah, yeah, something like that.
So it'd all be binder, when it's finished for that phase, it would all be binderd. Structures in it as needed, all that. And then once it's all completely built out, you come back in and top coat everything. So you, you're not dealing with top coat over here degraded by the time you get here, right?
It's the seams I worry about, they come apart.
Right.
There's a small joint, you know, you can put it. You can try to do it all you want, but it's all better if it's, it's.
Yeah, are you gonna be in charge of cleaning Manka Drive every night when the construction starts?
Absolutely, I'm gonna be right there with the power room with the guys that are doing the job.
Okay.
Heinz will probably be doing the site work. One Heinz, Westminster.
Sure, but you could see, you know, start digging, everything's gonna be a lot of dirt on, you're gonna, yeah.
No dirt at all.
Well, when they come out of the.
No, it's gonna be stone, it's not ads, just.
That's fine, I'm just letting, you know, that, we're just, we're just filling our.
I'm not gonna tolerate it.
We just wanna make sure.
So my office is a couple hundred yards away, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I was gonna say, DPW is right there, it's, as part of the inspections for the project. That's one of the housekeeping items that's typically maintained. So construction insurance, make sure that trucks aren't dragging so halfway down Manka Drive. As you get halfway down Manka Drive, he'll, he'll see it. So, yeah, that, that'll be up kept during the construction process.
I, I do have a question, Mr. Chair. Um, if this gets phased, um, there'll be a need for stormwater infrastructure. Your, the basin number two, the bigger one, um, everything in those buildings is connected to that. So phasing will have to include at least the infrastructure needed.
To, and that's why I was kind of pointing on where we would do it, just because obviously this one's easy.
Yep.
There is a break. Let me. So pretty much from the fourth building, great, it's catch basin here. So the first three buildings, all the catch basins are lined up here, anything behind it.
Goes to the underground.
Goes to the underground, so yes, the infrastructure for these three buildings would have to be put in as well as the basin. That's why I was kind of pointing at the phasing, like the right way to do it, knowing that this would have to be put in.
I think before you start putting buildings in, you're gonna wanna build that basin, get that pipe out of there.
Yes.
Hydroseed all of that.
Yes.
And then go on and then you can just stop piping up your sections.
If, if you haven't already, if you don't have a construction sequence with erosion control stuff.
I can add that, I can include that, yep. Yeah, so that phase two would be however much here you need to build.
I mean, if we gotta do three buildings, we'll do three.
Yeah, so we can include that in, uh, even if it's a little separate figure.
Yep.
Nice color one, so everyone knows what's going on.
Perfect.
Anything else? I guess we're gonna have a public hearing for this, right? So, thank you for the presentation.
No problem.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
Streamline the process, I like it.
Yeah.
Would you like to have a public hearing at the next meeting on April eighth?
If you think it'd be ready?
Yeah.
Yeah. Are you satisfied?
Yeah, I, comments provided aren't anything major, plan changes aren't anything major. So I'd see that being reasonable.
Okay.
One, one quick question. You're the champion. The security fence that you're gonna put up, are you gonna try to encase that as part of it? Or the sections of allowing, I'm just wondering if you get the apartments across the street? And the amount of people that are there, you're gonna have a security fence all the way around at the end? Are you gonna do that as part of the phasing?
Absolutely. Yep, we'll just keep going all the way down. We can put a temp section where we're gonna stop to keep them out of, well, keep them out of the area that's done.
Just security, that's all.
You know, we're gonna watch and see how this all goes, because I'm, you know, first thing I did when I went over there and walked that piece. Then I was greeted by a local policeman that's stationed there. And I said, holy God, what's going on? So kinda gave me a heads up that this could be an interesting situation.
They're paid, they're paid by, they're paid by English Village.
Oh, is that right?
It's a, it's, yeah, one, one, one police officer and it's paid by that.
They keep them busy though?
Just, that's his.
Just one.
Just, just his presence there makes a difference, probably.
And they, and they pay the city for his.
Oh, good deal, I like that.
There was a lot.
We got security on site.
There was a lot of activity down there prior to the police.
Oh, wow, a lot of bad activity, you know?
So we'll make a motion to continue this to the public hearing.
If you need to, I'll make a motion on the floor that we continue the, uh, meeting to the next, so the next meeting.
For a public hearing.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any further discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
That was it?
Yes.
Next thing on the agenda. I gotta put my GEDs on. The zoning amendment, historical preservation project. We do need a, another public hearing.
This one will be a joint, a joint hearing with city council.
Okay, oh, with the city council?
Yeah, this was, this was brought forward by, I believe, Judy Mack and Councilor Tyros.
Yeah.
At this, at this stage, all we're doing is proposing to go back to the city council for a public hearing.
Yes, yeah, to, to host the public hearing.
Yep.
They sent it over to us, we have to schedule the public hearing then, um, and then we'll host it with them. Then we'll make a motion to, I think, they, they want our input on it, um, as well as being the ones to host the public hearing. So then, uh, from there, we'll, uh, continue it to, um, I believe back to the zoning board.
For approval?
For approval, yeah.
For in case it's a special permit or, or.
So it's, it's not for deliberation tonight, it is just for us to schedule the best time that works for, for all of us. So it, it would be separate from the regular, uh, meetings that we have. Um, so I'd recommend it either the, the week before on the, uh, first of April, um, or.
As a suggestion, nothing more. Uh, should we touch base with the city council as to, um, the scheduling of it? And the public hearing?
No, they'll do it. They'll schedule.
They'll schedule, I thought we were.
No, we're, we're scheduling the meeting, um, so.
I thought you said it was a joint meeting.
Yeah, but it was put forward from city council to us to then schedule. And then they'll, they will attend and it would be the general council chambers and we'll be the ones in front of them, uh, leading the, the public hearing. And they're there mainly to listen in to the public deliberation while, while we host. Um, so it, it's, it's for us to, uh, just schedule. And they'll be notified and we'll have it be at a amicable time where they can, they can attend as well, you know?
So is that usually, uh, before the council meeting, or, uh, city council meeting, is that what they want, they usually want this?
Depending on how big it's gonna be.
Separate?
It might be separate, but. Uh, when they have a, when they have a meeting prior to their regular scheduled meeting, it's usually, uh, six or six-thirty. Or if they don't anticipate a long deal, they'll put it at seven. And at seven, well, sometimes they've extended their meetings. They've suspended the, the public hearing, opened the city council meeting and then. opened the city council meeting and then opened the public meeting again.
That's, that's what I, that's what I just kinda said that, uh.
Well, they may go an hour.
Joint meeting would be, uh, before this, might be for the city council meeting. Am I correct?
Before, before the city council.
That's correct, that's what I said.
Yeah, before the city council meeting.
That's correct.
So maybe an hour or half an hour, depending on what they want.
So I guess the other thing we have to find out is when's the next city council meeting? Is it the first Monday of the month?
I don't think it is.
I'm not certain.
I think, I think it is.
I think it's usually the first and, uh.
I only watch them on channel eight, so.
Can I make a suggestion or a motion that we find out when the next city council meeting is? And propose that we have an open meeting for the proposal for, uh, six PM prior to the meeting? And we'll check with the city council, council president and see if we're open.
I'll refer to the council president and ask if an hour prior to the next, well, potentially not the next city council, but one where, let me, let me actually find out when the coun, the city council's meeting.
Not too sure if it's the first Monday of the month usually, so that'd be April first.
April seventh and then following would be the twenty first. So I'd recommend the twenty first, just so that we have enough time for, um, I guess we have enough time for advertising from now.
Do we, isn't?
That's right, if you're gonna do that.
Fourteen days after.
Yeah.
Till eight, am I correct?
Yeah, so.
And sixty-five days of the, of sixty days of resuming.
Yes.
Recommend the twenty first.
Yeah, so recommend the twenty first. I'll consult with President Tyros and if, um, it's amicable to the city council as well, then we'll schedule it for an hour prior to the city council on the twenty first of April.
Chairman, does that work for you, the twenty first?
Works for me.
Sure, sure, let's do it that way. Touch base with the council president, whatever time he needs.
My thinking is that, this is the church on Central Street, right?
Yeah.
The old St. Gerhard School.
Correct. Yep.
They want, they want this, this for the old building, which used to be the convent for the nuns, cause that is an old, old building.
Yep.
So they want that so they can do something with that.
They're gonna do some mixed use.
They want to expand the parking and possibly do some sort of expansive renovations to the building, I think. Plus the building needs a lot of help. It's old and neglected.
Will that be explained during the public meeting?
Yeah.
What their intentions are.
Also.
So if we have the, the schedule for the public meeting, I'll, like I said, confer with Councilor Tyros, or Pres, Council President Tyros and, and, uh, we can have the public hearing then.
Okay, well, you're.
Twenty first should be fine, yeah. That is Patriots Day, that was the, is.
Plan on the twenty first.
Patriots Day?
Is it?
What is it?
Patriots Day.
No.
No, I don't think it is.
Usually the nineteenth.
So April twenty first, right?
Yeah.
The nineteenth is not Patriots Day this year.
Oh, it's not?
Day after Easter.
You're right, I think it's the twenty first.
Do I have it in my calendar? Now we're all looking at our phones.
I have Patriots Day in my calendar, so Google thinks it's Patriots Day. I don't know if gardener closes on that. Yeah.
Then it would be held on Tuesday. So it would be Tuesday, the twenty second. Yeah, it's Monday, April first. Good catch.
Oh, yeah, twenty first. Twenty first is Easter Monday.
And then Patriots Day is April twenty first, that Monday.
That's catchy.
So they would then host a city council meeting on the following, uh, following day, so on Tuesday, the twenty second. So.
Twenty second works for me.
We'll put it for six PM on the eight, Tuesday, April twenty second for the public hearing.
Okay. Plan on it, subject to change, but plan on it.
Yeah.
Okay. Would you like to put that in, uh?
Uh, I think I'd make a motion that we approach the city council if we can have a joint public meeting for April twenty second at six PM, if that works for them. And I'm sure you'll get back to us, Jason.
Yeah, second.
Bob seconds, any further discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. House.
Timing for the, uh, timing for the next meeting.
Well, the public hearing would be at six thirty, so we keep, keep everything at six thirty, then we move our meeting after that.
Okay.
So it'd be easier to.
Because the next meeting would.
So we're having a public, we're having a public hearing on our next planning board meeting, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, on April.
So that should be at six thirty.
Yep.
Then we'll do our regular meeting following that. Usually we say seven o'clock or whatever, it's whatever, how you.
Sure, that's fine.
Whatever, how you wanna write it.
So our next meeting is April eighth, six PM.
Yeah, we move forward, it'll be six thirty, all the time, that way it's as known.
So Tuesday, April eighth, we'll have six thirty public meeting and seven PM regular meeting.
Yeah, then regular meetings after that, it'll be always at six thirty.
That's exactly what screwed me up, uh,
Yeah.
Two months ago, last month.
Sorry.
It'll be easier to remember, six thirty in that one.
Six thirty, okay.
Okay, that's it. Motion to adjourn?
Go ahead, Mr. Gormier.
Motion to adjourn.
I second.
Adjourned, we're adjourned. Thank you.